To represent his perspective. And Mr. Corin is, uh, may not be able to make this meeting. So, at a minimum, I would intend to submit a communication from the chair. With that, let's begin with item number one.
Item number one, it's reports from various departments relative to the recommendations to encourage investment in the city's rent stabilization ordinance, housing building stock, improving the financial viability of operating a residential rental business, and reducing the rent burden on tenants in the city. These items also refer to the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee.
Okay, we have a number of departments that, um, are prepared to make their reports. LHD, CDD, CRA, DWP, Building and Safety, and the Office of Finance. So first, let me thank all of them for their cooperation in this effort to bring resources to the table that otherwise have not been a part of the discussion about the RSO and reforming the RSO. Obviously, this affects 630,000 housing units with over 1.5 million people in the city who are in those units, and it, that is a huge chunk of our population. I think, for my part, I think I've been very clear on this, but I'm driven by the primary finding of the Economic Roundtable's report that the city's residents are rent burdened. And notwithstanding all the issues that affect not just the apartment owners, but all industry, I think to recognize that the 1.5 million are suffering from rent burden is overwhelming to me. And notwithstanding that, I think that this is a democracy, and we have 15 members that will make this decision, and gaining a majority is something that is, is, is obviously necessary to have anything substantive occur. And I will tell you, there is, there is, um, some discussion by some members of the council who would just rather sit tight and do nothing. So it is something that, as we move forward, I'd like for all the advocates on all sides to consider. So I am, you know, I've advocated to remove the rent increase provision, tie it to the CPI, all the way down to zero. I'm concerned about the pass-through for, um, the utility. And we'll have recommendations related to both those items. But the primary purpose of this meeting is to recognize that everybody is suffering, and hopefully provide opportunities for apartment owners to have access to financing and other support services that will enable them to, um, to use dollars and services to upgrade their buildings. One of the disappointing things about the report is that we simply have not used the notion of primary renovation as it was intended. The apartment owners are not taking advantage of that, and that's hurting everybody, particularly the tenants, but it doesn't help the owners whatsoever. So we have to find ways to incentivize those renovation projects. I also believe that, that this is a huge opportunity for us to move forward with greening ideas, energy efficiency, and water-saving programs, and that DWP's role in encouraging that is critical. Can't do it all at once, though, so we'll take what we can get. At this point, I would like for each department to come forward and report on, on some of their thoughts and ideas. So with that, let's, let's, let's move forward. I think, in fact, if several of you want to, if you want to use these other chairs, that's fine, too. I think it's always nice to have a larger group come forward. I think we have first on our list, LHD. So if you would step forward with, we want to hone in on those ideas that, that would assist apartment owners in primary renovation. I think that's, that's been our, our major concern. Should I start over?
Good morning, Councilman. Haka Mordazai from the Housing Department. With regards to the issue that you mentioned, financing program for capital improvements in primary renovation. When we took a look at this, what we provided in the report are the broad contours of how such a financing program would look like, and what would be the critical components of the funding source for that financing program. We did an average for unit cost for both of these programs as they currently exist. Capital improvement, it works out to about $1,500 per unit, and primary renovation, it works out to around $7,000 per unit. And so the, the program that we conceived of would have essentially the city putting forth a one-third of the cost of the financing, and the private owner coming up with the remaining two-thirds. And under the existing law, then, the amount that the city would be putting forward could not be passed through in terms of increased costs for the tenant. And as a result, if you took a look at a financing, capital improvements, and primary renovation, capital improvements, 10,000 units, primary renovations, half of that amount, you wound up with a program that would cost the city around 16 million, and would result in a combined public and private investment of $50 million. When we-
There would also be processing. I mean, you, you used a big number, 10,000 units.
Right.
I just can't envision our ability to process, I mean, if, if, what would be the average size of a apartment?
Well, that's actually something that we also thought that the city may wish to consider, is limiting the financing program to mom-and-pop landlords. And so then we started talking about, if we, if, if the city chooses to do that, then we'd be talking about properties of four units or less.
So four units or less, you said 10,000 units, you're talking about 2,500 loans. That ain't going to happen.
And this would be grant.
I mean, would you, am I, so off-base that I can't calculate that we simply do not have the staffing to process 2,500 loans?
We would have to take a look at staffing to deal with that.
Staffing would be a significant problem, given all the cutbacks. And just even, even before the cutbacks, that's an enormous number of loans. It was not at all what I was envisioning. So the $16 million figure, to me, is very high. I would also, I want to mention, I don't believe we should restrict it to the mom-and-pops at all, because we should be doing it on the basis of, of ensuring that affordable housing is decent. So if there's a large apartment complex that, that needs renovation, but the owner, even though they're very wealthy, they could use the financing support, I see no reason why we wouldn't allow them access to the program as well. So, um, and, and again, that would drive down the number of loans and make it more achievable. And frankly, I think the economies of scale would, would reduce, would increase the number of units that could be affected by that. So I'm mentioning this for your benefit, because I want that to be incorporated into, into the notion. Have you looked at it without excluding the, the large properties?
The exclusion of, with regards to large properties or small properties, doesn't change the fundamental parameters or in the contours of the program. That would be simply a condition with which we would work with, whatever council would want. And of course, in terms of the funding source, would also impact how many units we would be able to subsidize. So we were looking at it at the broadest level. Certainly, if funding would be less, then we would be able to provide service to less. And it depends, of course, ultimately, on how much funding is really available for this type of a financing program.
The money would be coming out of where, under your proposal?
Well, that's the next thing that we looked at, is what would be important-
I hate it when people start the census with "well."
I apologize. Nevertheless, what's, what's important about this program is that if we were to have a financing program, it would have to have a sustainable source of revenue. And one key factor is that it shouldn't have really income restrictions for occupancy, or restrictions on rent levels beyond the existing limits that the RSO sets. And there shouldn't be a requirement for extensive rehabilitation beyond that contemplated by the landlord. So it really needs kind of a flexible use of funds compared to general fund dollars. When we took a look at our funding sources that we currently administer, funding source, and we excluded any funding that has no cash balances, or those that are precluded because of the restricted use of the funding, like Hopwa, for example, which is for people with AIDS, the remaining funding sources that we currently administer are problematic, because they have income certification documentation issues, and they also limits that on how much you can charge for rent. And the largest one, for example, Home, requires extensive rehabilitation beyond that, which would necessarily be contemplated by a private landlord. And so the existing funds that we administer didn't seem appropriate for the purposes at hand.
So you couldn't find any money?
Essentially, of the current funds that we administer, they wouldn't be appropriate for this.
So, any, any ideas on where we could find that money?
Well, the primary issue is that the funds not have any income restrictions, and so the closer you can approximate something like a general fund dollar, without the income restrictions that all of our funds have, the likelier you'll have a successful program.
Well, if the notion is to preserve affordable housing, um, they would first have to be defined as affordable housing. And it would seem to me that you could get the income certification under existing, with existing tenants. So why, why, why would you exclude those funds?
Well, for example, the home funds do have an 80% AMI cap, and so first thing is that everyone in a property, for example, would have to be income-qualified, presumably some wouldn't be. And so we have a problem there with how do we rehab some units within a project and not others. We also have a concern that-
But you're making a huge assumption there. I mean, there are areas of the city where everybody is qualified.
And it may be that in some properties that you do have mostly-
But let's talk about those. So your funds would qualify for that?
Presuming everyone would be able to demonstrate and provide the income-
Well, you said 80%.
80%, and one of the concerns is that tenants don't have an obligation necessarily to provide that information to their property owners. And so we'd have to rely on their willingness to participate. If a tenant wasn't willing to provide the income documentation, which is extensive, it does include-
Is it a self-certification process?
No, it does, Home requires that we look at income, tax income returns, all, all sources of revenue, it's very detailed. And if a tenant weren't willing to provide that, then we wouldn't be able to qualify them. Home also requires-
But if they would, you could?
Yes, we could. Home also requires that annually that the income be recertified, and so it's, it's an ongoing documentation that for a lot of property owners is a burden, it's very, and for, well, the property owner, the landlord, would be obligated to collect and maintain all this information, which is, you know, difficult, even for our projects in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, where this is, you know, what they do, it is a burden, and it's difficult to maintain. So our concern, again, is just that we're looking at fewer and fewer units within a property that would potentially be able to qualify for the program. And so, and just in the interest of making sure that it's most broadly applicable and likely to succeed, you really want to eliminate those kinds of restrictions where you can. We can also mention that several years ago, in 2005, the Housing Department did receive a small allocation of funds from CDPG to launch this kind of a program. It was limited to the mom-and-pop property owner, one to four units, and it was a loan program. We can tell you that the program didn't really succeed. We only had around 26 applications, only three of which actually proceeded and were completed. Most property owners weren't able to complete the application process, either because their tenants weren't income-qualified, or just the aspects of the program were unattractive to the property owner, it was structured as a, as a loan, and for other reasons, they just decided they didn't want to move forward. So, you know, to the extent that we have some history in this kind of a rehab program, it hasn't, the income restrictions of CDPG, which are the same as in Home, really proved to be a disincentive.
Theoretically, you would have greater success with, with mom-and-pops, because you have a fewer number of residents.
Potentially, potentially, but they would need-
What was so onerous about these CDPG dollars?
Well, again, it's the income qualification and having to gather the documentation from the tenants, which they have to voluntarily provide, but also the loan, the grant, it was structured as a loan, as a deferred loan, but nevertheless, a lot of mom-and-pops really see, you know, their properties as their, they're just reluctant to have any, you know, income or any debt associated with their property, so they weren't willing to, to proceed with the loan.
Okay, so what sources of, of revenue in the city are there that would have those, where those strings would not be so onerous?
Unfortunately, the general fund is just the most flexible source, and-
Well, it's the easiest one to think of, but I'm asking for-
Well, within the, the funds that the LHD administers, all of our funds have income restrictions, so it's difficult for us to identify anything.
Do all of them have the certification requirements?
They all do. Home has the annual certification requirement, but they all have an initial certification requirement.
And CRA's situation with their funds have the same kinds of-
I believe they're prepared to describe their programs. I wouldn't want to speak for CRA.
Actually, the next presenter was CDD. But you, you, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to send you away, I just wanted to stay in order here. You're next, after, after CDD. Sorry about that.
Tell us about CDD.
And Robert Science, Assistant General Manager, CDD. Housing Department correctly described the CDPG funds, they, too, are income-qualified. We do have dollars through our CDPG grant, which is, or CDPG budget, which is a policy decision that is on a separate track, that comes to the City Council, released by the mayor to City Council, and the allocation for any particular program, you know, it's a policy decision how that's allocated. Whatever dollars that are allocated have to be and meet the federal regulations and guidelines of a program that's being administered. The other question was on Section 108. Section 108 is actually CDPG dollars, and do follow a little bit more restrictive guidelines, because there's actually a job creation requirement connected to the Section 108 loans that we would actually have to fulfill as well. And we do not have a general fund within our department, or any other flexible dollars such.
Okay, so what kinds of, describe the restrictions that you have. Are they as onerous as the LHD?
Yeah, they're exactly the same, in terms of the CDPG, regardless of in the Housing Department or in CDD.
Now, if an owner falls into the category of low income, would they be eligible?
Yeah.
As a small business?
Yes, but then, if it's an economic development project as opposed to a housing project, as Robert had indicated, job creation or retention is the requirement, and that is a little difficult probably to envision for these types of projects.
Why?
So for every $35,000, there's the requirement for one FDE, full-time equivalent job, to be created. If we could actually prove it up and figure out the formula, how to track it, we can do it that way.
Yeah, I specifically said in, in the previous committee meeting, in CDD, that it was an economic development program, that we are trying to help the owners. And, and I know a lot of business owners are not economically disadvantaged whatsoever, and they're getting CDPG dollars. So I'm a little confused at the-
Because they're doing the, the actual job creation. So in, in terms of what we specialize in, our economic development, Plaza Pacoima, as an example, where we invested X millions of dollars into the project, resulting from the project is that low-income and moderate-income folks are employed from the, from the area on the project, and that's how it's qualified.
Well, but theoretically, we'd do the same thing on a small scale.
Yeah, theoretically, we can. We would, right now, we don't have any such program connected on the housing side. We would actually have to prove that-
But why do you say housing? I mean, it happens to be housing, it's still a business.
Well, it's still a business. We just don't have a mechanism right now to figure out how to count that as a, a job. If we're doing the small construction, and let's say, there's a number of construction-
Somebody's got to do the work. I mean, these are, if it's primary renovation, they're improving the building, so somebody's got to be doing the work.
So we, we would count, in that case, we would count construction hours, and for every $35,000, we would have to, have to have about 2,000 construction hours connected to, to that particular job.
So it can't be done?
It can be done, yeah. But we just have to figure out the, the actual methodology to, to count the-
And, but would your numbers be the same as their numbers in terms of the math? 16 million for 10,000 units?
No, we did not attempt to, to develop a program model.
I'm not, I mean, we're talking about developing pilot projects here, not, not ongoing projects. Ideally, they would be ongoing, but, but we got to start someplace. So, I mean, that was the intent, was to ask CDD to create a business model with support financing.
Yeah, so our business model, and from the economic development side, is that we can lend dollars to small businesses, and this, it just happens to be housing. They would have to meet all of the qualifications in terms of the equity that's involved, and would have to meet the job creation side, and would actually have to pay the dollars back over time, and we could actually work on the actual terms of the, of the loan. But we have that structure already established.
Okay, so the Housing Department was saying that it was, I think, $1,500 for, not primary renovation, but just for, what was it called?
Capital.
Capital, capital improvement, that's per unit, and 7,000 for primary renovation per unit. So a building of 10 units theoretically would be $70,000, which would require two full-time job equivalents. It could be four people working-
Right.
-six months, or, you know, I think that can be done. I, I think they can, they can meet those standards.
We would just analyze it like we do all of our projects, and underwrite on a case-by-case basis. But the math will work.
Yeah, well, I've mentioned this before, but there are census tract where 90% of the residents live below the federal poverty level. Wouldn't that, does that, can't that just meet the standard for the certification?
Well, for economic development projects, it's not so much about the area, but the project itself, and again, there-
Meaning the job creation?
Right.
But on the housing side?
Yeah. Housing would have to answer.
You don't have housing here?
I think, did anyone run out of room? No.
Oh, you mean the Housing Department?
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
I'm sorry, the question was whether we could qualify the household as low-mod area?
If the census tracts are 90% living below the federal poverty guidelines, which is much lower than your standard, why couldn't we just certify the residents without having to go through an onerous process?
We'd have to, I, I believe that there's a way of qualifying areas based on slum and blight, without having to individually qualify households, but we would need to work with CDD to flesh that out. I'm not sure how that would work, to be honest.
So slum and blight, from the economic development side, you have to provide a good and services, and the regulations specifically state that housing is not a good or service, and that's just a federal regulation, we decree-
Oh, but the financing is not for housing, is that, oh, you mean for the final product?
Right, right. If we want to use the terminology of slum and blight from an economic development, that's a secondary way that we actually qualify our projects, but it's-
No, I'm talking about a housing, looking at it from a housing perspective.
Right.
Again, I'm sorry, I would have to defer to CDD on the eligibility of the-
Well, he's deferring to you.
Yeah, we're from, we can't answer from the housing regulations assigned, so-
And we just, we don't have any housing programs that are qualified in that way, so this is something we'd have to work with CDD to determine.
Okay, so we know that a community is 90% below the federal poverty level, which is way below the 80% standard, and we can't just certify the whole area as being eligible? We have to go through an onerous process where we check each individual, just to create more city jobs, or why are we doing that? I mean, that doesn't make sense.
Well, the certification of individuals for income are the way all of the housing programs are structured now. Qualifying is a different national objective, I think is what we're talking about, is something that the Housing Department ever, hasn't ever done, and so that's why we'd want to work with CDD to-
Is it prohibited?
I don't know. As the, CDD is the CDPG administrator for the city, and so they're better qualified to respond to that. We, we just haven't had that discussion, because it's not the way any program is structured.
So the question is a different question, which we, that we're not traditionally asked, is that can we qualify housing as a, as a slum and blight project? From my understanding right now, the answer is no, but we could go back and research it, and ask our local head for guidance on that. But right now, our, our slum and blight economic development projects are for the provisions of goods and services that are not provided in the particular community.
Goods and services like what?
So, for example, using the Pacoima Plaza as, as an example, there was not a major retailer in that community, so, because we're providing new goods, availability of goods to the community, we were able to qualify it under slum and blight, and we were able to qualify it under the economic development with jobs.
So just deteriorated buildings isn't sufficient?
On the, on the blight side, for how, for economic development, yes, we could do it, but if it's a provision of housing, we would have to see if, if it would qualify. I don't have the answer for you right now, so we would have to go back and-
But it sounds to me like you, you have a lot more flexibility on the economic development side.
Yeah, we have a lot more flexibility on the economic development side if the owners are able to qualify in terms of, for the loans, are able to provide the paperwork, and are, we have an ability to capture the jobs information.
Well, but you could, you could actually show, could you, do census tract maps that would show what areas might be eligible?
Oh, yeah, we do have that information.
Because I think it'd be huge sections of the city of Los Angeles.
Right. And I think in terms of, of getting the housing, CRA and CDD actually sitting around the table with their staff to knock out the particulars of, of the project, and come up with something that is feasible, that we could implement with the right type of dollars. I think right now, in terms of how the-
If the average, if the average renovations are 7,000 per unit, when CRA and LHD are providing units at a cost of what?
Right, right.
200 to $500,000 per unit? It seems to me to be a pretty good deal, as opposed to those things just deteriorating into slums. So I'm, I'm not excited by the effort here. I mean, I, I really think you could do better. I know you all, you're all smarter than that. Delilah?
So, Delilah Sotelo, I'm with the Community Redevelopment Agency, and we looked at it, and worked with your staff to look at it from a business model standpoint, rather than just necessarily a housing standpoint. And we looked at it from- And we looked at it from a regulatory standpoint relative to the community, or the California redevelopment law, as well as the type of programs that we could, in the past, have implemented, and in the future, may look to doing a pilot program. So I think that we came up with something that would be of interest to you. We have grant funding that is non-CRA money, but it's actual federal stimulus dollars that came through the last ARA grant, and it's called the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, it's called the PACE program. And what it allows us to do is throughout the entire city, not just in redevelopment project areas, it allows us to work with commercial building owners to look at the energy audit of their building, and be able to install energy efficiency program, an energy efficiency program in their building. It provides a no-cost energy audit to them, it provides a no-cost loan loss reserve fund that they have access to, and it allows the commercial property owner to basically share in the utility savings as a result of the energy upgrade. So what it does is it provides loan funding to the commercial property owner, in this case, it would be the larger apartment units, not just the mom and pops, but actually the larger apartment units, and it would allow them to finance those energy rehab costs at a low-cost loan program. And then with the savings that they have on the utility bills every month, they could pay back those loan proceeds, but then also profit from those, because it's a direct savings of operating costs to them. So it's a program that has a life through 2012, so it's not a long-term program, it's basically a pilot program. We're rolling it out so that in summer of 2011, we can actually start those energy audits. And there are some financing complications that we're trying to work out. One example would be that the first trustee lender would have to subordinate to the energy audit or the energy covenant, and that's why it doesn't work for the smaller mom and pop, you know, the four units, the fourplexes, the fiveplexes. But it does help and significantly give an advantage to the large property owners that have maybe 50 units or 100 units. So that's one area that we're very hopeful about, and that, again, is a citywide program.
Could these be used all over the city?
Yes, it's citywide, so that...
So they're not restricted to specific areas?
Correct. They're not restricted to specific areas.
This is separate and apart from tax increment, at, taxing...
This is totally separate from tax increment or housing...
So it's not bound by the rules of tax increment?
Correct. This is a program that we actually applied for through the state, and the state received funding through the federal government.
Are you working with DWP on implementing this, or is there any involvement there? Because they also have an Economic Development Fund.
Yeah, I think that Jenna, who is the program manager of it, has interfaced with the department, as well as the State Department.
So we could combine the dollars to...
Yeah, that would be, you know, a good purpose...
So the specific intent of this money was to go to apartment owners, or...
No, it was actually for commercial retrofitting, so it also meant industrial buildings, and large office buildings, but given the flexibility of the program...
But there's nothing to preclude home renovation, or apartment renovation?
Right, I think that we would have to work on the program, the details of that, but it's something that, for us, has the greatest amount of potential to be a program.
Great, okay, good, yeah.
So, that we're hopeful about that.
Obviously, you didn't apply for these monies, right? That's a part of the problem. Now, would you work with housing as well, or is there a need to do that, or...
We had not identified the commercial, large residential buildings as being a primary user of this, but now, you know, if that's something that does happen, we would have to develop a pilot program. The energy audits would be done through a third-party contractor, so not city staff.
Okay.
And the onus, again, would be on the owner of the apartment building to go get the financing to pay for the improvements, but this bond program allows for loan loss reserve that would make the financing secureable.
Okay, how much money are we talking about?
This program is about $8 million.
$8 million?
Yeah.
And do you have any thoughts on how much might be set aside for a program like this?
I think that when I spoke with Jenna, again, if we were able to work out the details, it would be about a million, million and a half, in terms of a pilot program.
And how many units would that cover?
It depends. I mean, if it's energy efficiency units, it depends, again, on the audit and the drain of the building itself. A 1950s building would be significantly more than something that was built in, you know, 1974 and 1980.
Okay, if you use the Housing Department's math, the 7,000 and the 1,500...
So if you did 1,500 a unit, you could do 15,000 for, you know, a 10-unit building, and I think that would be too small, so you'd have to go up to like 50 or 100. So if you did 100 units, it'd be 150,000, and a million dollars would potentially be 10, 10 properties, 10 or so properties?
Okay.
Of large properties, 100-unit properties.
Well, that's sort of an easy one. I would like to incorporate in the report, set aside of, let's just say 1 to 2 million, give you flexibility on the second million.
Yeah, we'd have to figure out how to...
Yeah, but that we allow, that we'd be working toward allowing apartment owners to access this for renovation and primary renovation, and now, could you partner with CDD and housing on the job creation issue?
I think that...
Is yours also tied to job creation?
It is. That was the main part of the federal stimulus, that it's about job creation, and it's about creating green jobs. But from our perspective, it's creating the green jobs on the auditing side, to do the utility audit, and then also creates it for the installation of the actual improvements. So for us, we would work with the, you know, Trade Tech, or some of the other local trade organizations to try to bring in local residents to do green jobs.
Yeah. Well, I laugh, because most of us do our own work. I mean, we, in these communities, you find somebody who could use, do the work and use the job, so. I think now would be a great time, and please stay here, Delilah, but, and pull up a chair, we can use these for now, but, DWP? I'm gonna keep you, stay close, you don't have to sit up here, but stay close, because I want, as they're talking about their stuff, maybe you can get some thoughts about your program. If you, yeah, Delilah, if you could stay.
Can you get away?
Hi.
Hi, good afternoon. Kelly Bernard, Director of Economic Development for DWP. I am here with my staff, now let him introduce himself.
I'm Belu Nyerika.
So, DWP, on the economic development side, we administer or accept the applications for our utility infrastructure loan, so we are here to respond to some of the questions raised about the existing loan program. I will give just a brief overview of it, and then Belu can talk about some of the loans we've made. So generally, the utility infrastructure program is about $5 million annually. It is for industrial and commercial users. Our ordinance that speaks to the, that speaks of the program does not include residential, it's silent on it, but we are open to including...
Theoretically, you just hand a million bucks over to LAHD.
We do that now.
No, but this would be for this specific program, and so the criteria that you would require is that it be in the form of energy efficiency?
Yes.
That the benefit would be, there would be some need to create energy efficiency out of it?
And so our loan program currently covers infrastructure, which is power transmission, power factor corrections, and water conservation.
Power what corrections?
Power factor correction.
Factor corrections, that's what I thought you said, but that meant nothing to me.
I'm not an engineer, and it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean anything to me.
What is a power factor correction?
That would, to the best of my knowledge, that would relate to, you know, managing the fluctuation, trying to stabilize the energy that goes into a building, to ensure that, you know, appliances are not destroyed.
That's exactly what I thought it meant. Thank you, thank you for that.
Yeah, so our program is...
Well, rather than you working on housing, it seems to me that LAHD does that, but as long, your goal is to get the energy efficiency, right?
Our goal primarily is to increase the number of industrial and commercial rate pairs, and so the loan, our loan program has primarily been used for infrastructure loans, but it is, you can use the loans for...
But it's an economic development loan, then?
Yes, it's an economic development loan, and so, but it can be used for energy efficiency and water conservation issues, but it's about creating new businesses, and, so most of the, our new businesses are coming in, and they find out, in order to get power, they need a new transmission or something, and then they come to the department.
Okay, well, but in any case, there, we might be able to set aside a little bit of that money to support all these other...
Currently, economic development has a partnership with LEHD, where we support, we provide $10 million over 10 years for affordable housing that meets Title 24, and so...
What's Title 24?
Energy efficiency.
Oh.
State code.
The statewide energy efficiency standard, the statewide energy efficiency standard by which, you know, we determine whether a building or a project qualifies, so if it's...
Now, that, does that have all the same strings attached that were described by housing?
To the best, yes, I...
Or are they different strings?
No, they are, it's a statewide standard, actually.
Okay, but, please, explain how you use those $2 million.
It's actually a $10 million that was...
Oh, $2 million a year?
It's $10 million over a 10-year period.
Oh, I thought you said two, okay, thank you.
Over a 10-year period, and I think we're in the ninth year, so we have two more years of the appropriation to go. The way the funds are used now, it's as a $200,000 bonus that's attached to Affordable Housing Trust Fund projects if they're able to demonstrate that they meet the Title 24 requirement. So it's not a separate allocation that we make to projects, it's projects that have already been approved and receive funding through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
So it's a bonus to the developers?
To, right, to comply, if they meet the requirements of Title 24. And so they, those projects...
Why wouldn't they want to meet the requirements of 24? I mean, energy, isn't it gonna save them money in the long run?
Well, a lot of, there is an additional cost associated with it, but...
So this isn't a loan program, it's...
That piece is...
This piece is not, but it's coupled with the regular trust fund program, which is primarily home-funded, and that is a loan program.
Okay, so the cost per unit is even higher, when you consider the $200,000, again?
I think the average subsidy that the Housing Department provides, including the $200,000, is around $85,000 per unit, but the total development cost, yes, it is, it's somewhere around $200,000, I believe.
Oh. Okay, let me ask a couple of questions for DWP real quick. What about the energy efficiency appliance program? Is there any way we can, like, I described some of those areas, a 90% poverty rate in a, in a community, could they work with the owners to provide energy-efficient appliances?
Well, we currently have energy, I should just acknowledge that, as Tom Gaskett or Lorraine Pasquet are energy efficiency and water conservation, and they couldn't be here, our board meeting is still going on, so they couldn't be here today. But my understanding is that we currently have energy efficiency, and it's not income-restricted, it's just, it's for both commercial and residential, and anyone can apply for those.
So can an apartment owner with 20 units go and say, "I need 20 refrigerators"?
The much I know about that energy efficient, the appliance program is that it actually is focused primarily on head, like, heavy air conditioning units, is not, it doesn't apply, you know, other than rebates and other smaller programs that we have. Right now, the energy efficiency is focused on the heavy air conditioning units and all that.
Well, so could they do that for apartment owners?
For apartment, yes, for apartment owners who are replacing HVAC, and the pools are tend to be a heavy user of energy, and so they, if they re, if they change over, make it more efficient, their pools and those sorts of common areas, yes, they can receive the energy efficiency rebates.
But if they do the pass-through to the tenants, why would they be incentivized to do that?
If we provide the pass-through to them?
No, I'm...
No, yeah, it's directly...
That was a question, that was a rhetorical question for the housing folks in the audience. If we were, they're recommending a pass-through of the utilities in the common areas to the tenants, that they pay for that, and I'm saying there would be no incentive for the owners to do your energy efficiency things if they're not paying for it. So it's just a rhetorical question. The third question I had was solar. What can we do to assist apartment owners with solar program?
I apologize, Councilman, we are just not the experts on solar, so I can't even begin to speak on behalf of the department in regards to solar. Again, they were scheduled to be here, but our board meeting is still going on from this morning.
Okay, well, then let it be noted that the inefficiency, inefficiencies of apartment buildings could be greatly reduced if we could figure out a solar program for apartments, and it's one of the frustrations that those of us who believe in energy efficiency have had for many years, but it's also frustrating the RSO process, because those are buildings that could be saving a lot of money, and it's, again, pitting tenants against landlords on a common interest, reducing the cost of the building, which would theoretically allow the owners to charge less rent, and, which would benefit the tenants. So that's something that I would like to get a response from DWP, if you could pass that on.
Sure.
Okay, let's see, where do we stand on the housing piece, and then I'll get, I'll get right to you, David, but is there a way that we can combine all of these notions into one program?
Well, we're certainly happy to convene and find a way to work together on that.
Uh-huh. I just, I just find it very difficult to understand that the Housing Department can't be more innovative with such a critical need in a city that is, you know, more than 65% We keep throwing big dollars at creating singular units, and we do nothing to restore the existing dilapidated housing. And, again, it's exacerbating already difficult times for apartment owners who, who then pass the costs, the unnecessary costs on to the tenants.
Councilman Alkon?
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention something, as we move forward in developing a program, one of the things that we looked at as an essential component of the program that would make a difference in terms of the pass-through part, is that the, is that the funding would have to be provided as a grant, as opposed to a loan. If it's, if it would be, under current our rent stabilization ordinance rules for capital improvement and primary renovation, if it's a loan, it still can be passed, the landlord can still pass it through, because they have to pay it back. But if it's financed by a grant, then obviously that's, or a proceeds from insurance, something that they don't have to pass through, then they can't pass that portion on to the tenants. So that's something to consider. It doesn't necessarily mean that the idea of these loan programs are not, don't, lack merit, but it would make a difference if the financing that we come up with is ultimately a grant form as opposed to a loan form. And that's how come, when we came up with our, the original idea of this program, we talked about it...
I understand that, I'm all for grant programs, but the grant programs are not revolving, so you get one bite of the apple instead of many bites of the apple over time. And I recognize that, that those smaller programs can be passed through to the tenants, but I think you're making a big assumption that the tenants don't want those, those improvements, then many tenants would be perfectly willing... Then many tenants would be perfectly willing to pay a small additional cost to get their building fixed. In fact, I hear that complaint all the time. But, of course, that would have to be worked out, so maybe a combination of the two. But where are, where are the grants, and where's the money to loan? Right now, we can't get past that, except with the CRA's ARA grant. So that's, it is a critical problem. Okay, now, Building and Safety. Thank you very much.
So lonely up here.
They all ran when you came up here.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Dave Lara with the Department of Building and Safety. Basically, our report discusses about, you know, the fact that we collect fees for projects such as renovations, new construction, additions thereto, and in the case of the RSO businesses, of course, you know, we typically deal with multifamily apartment units in those cases. What we've looked at is potentially a couple of incentives that we feel that the RSO businesses can utilize, and these are tried and true incentives that, one of them, we've actually had for the last 15 years. This is our case management program, which basically takes a project of any size and helps navigate through the process. Now, many people have complained that the process is very cumbersome and so on, and this is a, this has been a very effective tool to have projects such as these go through and help navigate, and then saving that time, of course, will be equal to saving money. In addition to that, we have another service called our Parallel Design Permitting Process. That's relatively a new service that we've provided since earlier this year. Basically, what happens is, is that a customer will come in, file their plans for a plan check, but the plans at that time do not have to be fully detailed. As a matter of fact, they can actually be close to conceptual. What our plan checker does at that point in time is that they work along with the architect, and basically, it's kind of a design process in addition to a plan check, and it's, and it's proven to be a very practical way to take these projects, so that way, when somebody, if somebody doesn't want to come in and submit a plan cold to Building and Safety with the expectation that, you know, everything's good code-wise in going through corrections, this way, they work with the plan checker throughout the process, and those corrections or those issues that come up or could be subject to, to giving attention to, basically go away. And so, we find that this is a very practical way to, to speed up the process, in which case, it saves the owner's money.
Okay, have, have you had significant experience on primary renovations?
Yes, and, and many times, it depends on the size of the building, but on the, on the renovations portions of it, though, we have a whole different level of services. For example, I'll use, if, if we're talking about a 10-unit apartment house, you know, we have a preliminary plan check, which we also involve the fire department at that time, and we go through that process and look at the plan carefully, both with us and the fire department, and will give recommendations on what they knew at the plan, and what they have to do with the plan, rather, even before they actually submit the plan check. So we have a lot of different types of services, whether the renovations, new, out of the ground, or additions thereto, that, that could fit the need.
Now, this combined plan check, design, approval-
Parallel design process.
Explain that to me again, how, how does that work?
Okay, you can come in and submit your plans, you pay a plan check fee.
Right.
However, your plans do not need to be fully designed. They can be actually closer to the conceptual stage of the project.
Mm-hmm.
And then, our plan check engineer then works with the designers, with the design team, as they go along, and they do a, a parallel, like a plan check, and the project evolves through its design at the same time. It's rather unique, because what you're doing is, rather than coming in with a project with the expectations that, you know, that the architects, for example, which they, many of them know their codes, come in and they say, "Okay, we provided A, B, C, and D", rather than dealing with that at the end with a full set of plans, A, B, C, and D may not fully be necessary. You may have options to B, for example, or options to C, rather than providing that. So that gives, that gives people a lot of, a lot of latitude in their design.
Okay, so, so now, you're going to implement this anyway? Have you started doing this?
Yes, we have, we've, we've already started this program, the Parallel Design Permitting Process Program, we started earlier this year. Case management has been around for quite a long time, and basically, anybody-
How do we get the word to apartment owners?
What we'll do is that we'll put some, I'm, I'm also the manager in charge of our website, we will make sure that we put this out on our website for informational purposes, and we'll, we'll make sure that our public counters are aware that there's these services available. One distinction, I do want to make sure that everybody's clear, I know the Parallel Design Permitting Process is not free. You do have to pay your fee, your plan check fee, but again, the difference is, is in the amount of time that you save.
Time is money. Okay, well, thank you very much, I think, let me see the, okay. Well, the question here, I'll, I'll read it to you. Can you create an expedited permitting process unit for RSO apartment owners? I don't know what the demand is going to be, so it's, it's a little tough to, for you to answer that question, I recognize. But would there be a unit that people could go to that would be sort of informed on RSO, or not necessarily RSO, but for expediting permits?
Yes, we'll, we'll make sure that, that part of the criteria that we use for projects in case management, for example, will include RSO properties.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, we have the Office of Finance?
Hi, good afternoon, Larry Minocchio with the Office of Finance. We were tasked with reporting the grocery seat activity for rental, residential dwelling units in the city. However, under our ordinance, there are many different reports in that ordinance, included in there would be commercial properties, swap meet activities, hotels, motels. So it makes it very difficult to provide an accurate number related to residential rentals. Also, conversely, smaller mom and pops, such as buildings that are less than four units or take in less than $20,000 a year in, in rental, are not required to report. So that reporting is not, would not be included in our report. So, the closest thing that we could do would be to look at a standardized industrial code for residential rentals, but that would include hotels and motels, and I think that that would skew the reporting, something that the committee wouldn't want.
No, it, here's, here's the concept that, that I really wanted to explore. Where we have a rent stabilization ordinance that is, where the rent is tied to this CPI, why couldn't we have a tax structure for apartment owners in the rent stabilization areas, or that are under rent stabilization, that would also be tied to the CPI? It doesn't seem to be fair that we tie their hands on, on, on the rent, on what they can get in, in terms of revenue, but we don't recognize that on the taxing side.
Well, the, the ordinance right now, that's one of our, it's our second lowest ordinance in terms of rate, a dollar 27 per thousand gross receipts, so in terms of how much we can lower it, I mean, there isn't-
No, that wasn't the question, the question was tying it to the CPI.
And, I'm sorry, the CPI being?
The California, the Consumer Price Index.
That's not part of our, our taxing scheme, I mean, I don't know how that we would be able to do that.
Well, it would seem to me that if, if we are saying that they cannot receive, if the CPI is, right now, it's negative, it's below zero.
Okay.
This is when they need more help than ever. Why couldn't we create a scheme where we give them a discount rate when the CPI is low? So if it's two, they get a 10% discount, three, or, or one, they get a 20% discount, and zero, they get a 30% discount.
Well, I guess the issue then is identifying who are we going to give the discounts to?
Yeah, okay. He's, he's, he's converting my language into taxman language, so maybe, maybe it'll be more helpful to you.
Okay.
It's, it's not different than when we do, revalue the property assessments, and I know they already get a consideration of that in the, in the real, in the property tax, but why can't we do the same in our grocery seats tax?
Well, again, it would be, who are we going to apply it to? And I think that's where our issue is, that-
People under RSO.
Okay, all right, then, I don't-
Businesses under RSO, because their, their kind of business is very different than other apartments, that, that don't have restrictions.
And so, would housing would be able to provide us with that data?
Absolutely. We have a list of everyone.
And I would say that would be doable.
I like the way you think. That would be my intent, but I don't know the ramifications of that. And so, what I'd, I'd like to look at is, is only for RSOs, a tax rate under poor economic times, that I would define as the CPI dropping below three, so that if it gets to two, they get a 10% discount, one, they get a 20% discount, and zero, they get, they get a 30% discount, and then, if it gets below zero, they just stay with the 30%. So I would need that kind of analysis, but you would need to get, you would need to know who.
Exactly.
I see, interesting. Maybe we could do a sample, rather than, we're not going to be able to do, get all that information.
Sure, if they can provide us a filed-
And how should we provide them with a, a sample of, that they could estimate what, what the impact would be? Because I have a feeling Mr. Parks might ask that question, just a guess. It's just a different way to, to help out. Okay, well, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any other questions of the, the Finance Office?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, he ran out, so he's, he's not going to hear it, he's, he's, he's going, did you hear what he said? Did, did, let me, we have several cards here, let's, we have, well, actually, not that many, four, five, six, seven, seven speaker cards. So let's start with Larry Gross, eight speaker cards.
And nine on the way.
Yes?
Larry Gross, Coalition for Economic Survival. Well, didn't think it was going to be easy, but we, we want to thank you, Councilmember Alarcon, for exploring a, a new approach in an attempt to achieve a just, just place in this contentious rent control debate. And it's time to think out of the box, and, and that's what we're trying to do here. What we know is that the overwhelming majority of tenants are suffering economically, and the current provisions of the RSO are contributing to the increased rent burden they face. Unfortunately, the revised RSO proposal presented to HCD on September 29th provided tenants with little or no relief, while providing landlords with a roadmap to increasing rents, which will increase tenants' rent burden. These proposals that you're trying to deal with, on the other hand, attempt to secure more equity and balance. In lieu of the rent floor and the unfair utility surcharge and the proposed pass-through, this provides, or seeks to provide landlords incentives to invest and improve their property without adding to the tenants' rent burden. But let me put this in perspective and, and remind everybody, that the rent study also showed that most landlords have been and are doing pretty well financially under the RSO. And many of the owners and managers that have been coming to these hearings with their crocodile tears and, and wo, stories of woe, have 500,000, 1,500 units, over 4,000 units, as in Park Le Brea back here. These owners are not in dire need. And so, I guess I differ with you just a little on the fact that I think that this relief must be targeted to the struggling mompas and the other landlords who really need and can really benefit by these proposals. So I do urge support for these efforts, and urge you to continue in these creative approaches, and I thank you again.
Thank you. Yes, you know, I should have said before the public comment period that it would be my desire, and if I haven't said it publicly before enough, let me, let me be clear. The goal is to identify sources of support for those struggling apartment owners, as, not all of the apartment owners, but to balance against the, the, the fact that the rent is tied to the CPI only down to three, and under the Housing Department's proposal, down to two, and I believe that it should be tied to zero. I also believe that the utility surcharges should not be passed through to the tenants, but at the same time, recognizing that, that utility rates are very costly for everyone, it seems to me we should design, because, because many of the RSOs provide affordable housing that we sorely need, we should give special consideration to them to create programs to get them to become more energy efficient, thereby saving everybody money, which could then again be, give us more political support for reducing the, the rate increases, the rent increases to zero. So that's my intent, and I just wanted to make that clear. Now, some of these programs, my goal is not necessarily, I, frankly, I don't think the Park Le Breas of the world or, or other projects are necessarily going to need the city's financing, if they do need any financing at all. So, that's why these programs are, are very small, but in scale, because we, we don't see people flocking to the city of Los Angeles. And if they do flock, then we'll have to reconsider getting more, more funding to them, but I don't think that's going to be the case. So with that, Linda Valverde, from LA-Can.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Linda Valverde, and I'm with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. I'm also a tenant in the city of Los Angeles. 10 years ago, personal tragedy struck my life, and as a result of that, I lost my home. I came to the Skid Row community because that was the only place that I could afford. As I've struggled back from homelessness, I was able to get a full-time job, but unfortunately, that forced me out of the SRO unit because I was over income. Pushed me into the market rate world, and that was not, it's not easy. I pay more rent today than I was on my mortgage payment, and as a single woman- And as a single woman, it is struggling. It's frustrating, especially when I see my friends who are trying to raise their children and pay the rent and put food on the table, you know? It's a struggle worse than mine, but it's a struggle. And so, today, we're here to, to urge this committee to include any recommendations for a loan fund, that also recommendations eliminate the minimum rent increase and utility pass-throughs be considered also. Tenants continue to be burdened, and the SRO needs reform to restore equity. Benefits for landlords cannot move forward without tenants receiving their fair share of benefits at the same time or earlier. I'm not looking forward to this June because I know my rent will be increased again, and I'm already paying 45% of my income to my landlord. So, thank you.
Thank you. Linda, you're, you're on the next card with Deanna, I believe it's Weekly?
Did you put my name?
Oh.
I was trying to impersonate her. Good afternoon, sir. My name is Deanna Weekly, and I want to thank you for presenting yourself all of this time again and again, not just for the landlords, but also the tenants. Because of health issues and a small stint of homelessness, I too am rent burdened. I live at the Alexandria. Once kicked out, now reaffirmed, I am there again. And to this day, I'm still trying to figure out where all those millions and millions and millions of dollars that was given to Ruben Isles and his gang to renovate that building. It hasn't happened. It really hasn't happened, and I still live there. And I live there where the alarms go off constantly. If you do anything, if you do anything, eliminate the floor, because with my income staying stable the way it is, I'm not getting a raise. And eventually, in a couple of years, I'll be priced out right into homelessness again. I'm not the only person that has this problem. As you were saying, it involves 6,500 public housing units. It involves the RSO of 630,000 units. How many people is that? And as the million-dollar study showed, the landlords, they're doing a lot better than we are. The only thing that we're asking for is a break. And when we do ask for a break, what we're met with is resistance and violence. And we can do better than that. We live in America. Thank you.
Thank you. Thelma Perez. After Thelma, we have Devon Corona.
Good afternoon. My name is Thelma Perez, and I'm with the Los Angeles Human Right to Housing Collective. I'm also here as a tenant. I just want to preface my testimony by saying that I'm not against this proposal. I'm not exactly for it. I think that we've seen a lot of, throughout this debate, we've seen a lot of favor go to landlords. And I just want to say that when we're talking about renovations or improvements or maintenance, I think that most of the maintenance that's done on our, that's not done on our buildings, because I've worked with thousands of tenants, and I haven't ever seen a landlord that regularly maintains our building. So, I think that that maintenance really needs to come out of the rents that we're paying. However, I do think that it's a great idea for struggling people to have some kind of economic relief during this time. So, I think that, if that's a landlord, I think that landlords should have this kind of program, but only when tenants' rents are not being increased, when we're seeing that maintenance is not going on in these buildings. So, I really think that for 32 years, we've seen that the arbitrary floor hasn't really done its job, because if we have an increase in our rents, we shall see maintenance that's consistent, which we haven't. So, I just want to make that testimony and just say that I represent thousands of tenants who I've worked with throughout my history as a tenant organizer, who aren't receiving income increases and who aren't receiving maintenance and who are receiving rent increases. So, we really need to see some kind of balance go on here, and the balance needs to be in favor of the tenants right now, because we've seen through this million-dollar economic roundtable study that landlords are really doing okay through this economic time. Thank you.
Thank you. Devon? Is it Devon?
Yeah.
Okay. Devon, okay. After Devon, Councilmember Parks, Representative Purvi Doshi.
So, Devon Corona, I'm part of Comunidad Presente, and I'm also part of the Coalition, which is the LA Human Right to Housing Collective, that's been here practically every week talking about this issue. And what can I say, Mr. Alarcon? I applaud you for trying to think outside the box and, and really look and, and ask some, some really hard-hitting questions to some of this, our, our administration staff here that's around us. But as you can see, there's been lots of empty ideas, a couple of good ones that have come up, but usually complacency breeds empty ideas, and, and that's what's been the issue thus far. Just to add, I, I think, I don't know if it happens already, but it would be great to see these departments work together more consistently and actually meet to talk about what we're actually talking about here, so that whenever there's ideas being presented, there's some actually teeth into them. The one thing I want to just mention lastly is that I caution some of the expediency that we're talking about with the, you know, Department of Building and Safety, along with giving out free grant money to certain landlords. I, I understand that there's some mom-and-pop landlords who are out there who are struggling. I, I know a few. And those are the folks I think we should figure out ways of helping, but just keep in mind that there's, you know, the rent study had said already that there wasn't already, already an imbalance between landlords and tenants, and any overture that we give to landlords is still creating more of an imbalance. So, but I, I really think, thinking outside of the box, and we hope that we can get these other council members on board, because like you said earlier, it's really about those eight votes, and even the mayor to sign this and ratify whatever gets passed at the city council. So, that's the job we're trying to push, and we're hoping we can at least continue to talk about this and, and figure something out, because as everyone else said, I myself am rent burdened, and the, the problem's going to continue to grow unless we start looking at some proactive approaches. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Purvi?
Good afternoon. Purvi Doshi with Councilmember Parks Office. On behalf of the council member, I just wanted to express that he does understand that there are still some issues with the RSO study and the Housing Department's recommendations that need to be vetted. We appreciate that this motion comes from a genuine, a genuine desire to help apartment owners and challenge departments to come up with innovative ways to help these small business owners. However, we do feel that this study has been prolonged for a really long time. It's been vetted through HCD for over a year, and we would like to see their final recommendations come forward through committee and onto the council floor. We can vet it over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Schultz. After Barbara, we have Ann Nguyen.
Good afternoon. Barbara Schultz, Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. I also appreciate your efforts and wish the creative juices were flowing a little more freely. I'm wondering whether there's any pilot programs nationally that we could look at that have done something along these lines. But I wanted to echo something Devon said about a, a little bit of concern when I heard Building and Safety talk about expediting permits. And the reason I'm concerned is I think that the primary reason we don't have more primary renovation is because of the, the threshold for primary renovation being Building and Safety. So, an owner goes in, applies for permit, has to fill out maybe five questions. If he, if he says no on those questions, then he doesn't get sent to the Housing Department, and there's no primary renovation. If he says yes, it gets sent to the Housing Department to determine whether they need to fill out a tenant habitability plan. And what, as tenant advocates seem to find, is most of the primary renovation cases are coming when tenants come to us and say, "They're doing all this work in my building. What, what, what should we do?" And we call, we call the Housing Department. They go by, find out that there is primary renovation, and they have to put on stop-work orders. And the reason why they didn't know it before is because owners know that all they have to do is say no to these five questions at Building and Safety, and then they don't have to go through all this, this rigmarole with the tenant habitability plan and the primary renovation ordinance. So, I think we really need to fix that entry point right there with Building and Safety. And I think the, the gentleman left from Building and Safety, because we've tried to talk to them about this before, and it's kind of an ongoing problem, and that's something that we could fix without spending any money. And so, I worry that with more expediting the process, like putting it online, it's going to be even easier for landlords to avoid the primary renovation program.
Okay. Now, what, tell me how that works. I'm not understanding...
Well, because, because...
Why wouldn't they want to go through the primary renovation program?
Well, because then they might have to, if, if, if the Housing Department determines that it's primary renovation, they're going to have to fill out tenant habitability plans. It might cost them money, because they might have to temporarily relocate the tenants. They might even have to offer permanent relocation. It's a lot easier for them to just say, "No, no, no. I'm just going to do the work, and maybe I'll be done before the Housing Department finds out." So, I mean, that's already a, a big problem area.
So, they get the permit from Building and Safety, but...
Right. And, and I think that we either need to figure out how to fix that problem at Building and Safety, or think about other solutions, like maybe moving residential permitting to the Housing Department. I don't even know if that's possible, but it, because it's the Housing Department that runs the primary renovation ordinance, but they are not there at the entry point, it's Building and Safety, this has never really worked quite right. And we end up getting all the primary renovation cases via complaints to the Housing Department.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Ann Nguyen?
Good afternoon. Councilmember Ann Nguyen with the Central City Associations. Apartment owners are being affected by the downturn, and foreclosures of apartment buildings are on the rise, just as they are with single-family homes. But we have to remember that good landlords and good tenants are pulling in the same direction. Property owners do not want to lose a paying tenant and face the prospect of a vacant unit. We appreciate your efforts to make the pie larger and proactively search for options to assist the industry and solve this complex problem. We've met with a number of departments, and, and while the, the dialogue was productive, everyone quickly realized that the city is very resource-challenged. There's no pot at the end of the rainbow to help everyone in the city that needs help. We want to ensure that limited city resources are used in a way that do not detract from the provision of vital city services. This could have severe long-term impacts on our communities. In these tough economic times, the real benefit to property owners is to keep the certainty of a 3% floor. Small rent increases are a tool in the landlord's toolkit. The property owner does not have to, and often will not, use the 3% increase, but owners must have prop, must have access to that flexibility that it allows. This is the greatest benefit that the city can do to help our property owners as well as our tenants. Thank you.
Ryan Minier?
Ryan Minier with the California Apartment Association. Thank you again for having this hearing today, and thank you to you and your staff for all the work you've done on this issue. From our conversations with the various departments and from reading the reports, there seems to be a lack of city resources to help with this program. And the resources that do exist seem to be income-restricted, and as we know that right now, RSO units are not means-tested, so a lot of these apartment, RSO units would not work with those income qualifications. The Economic Roundtable Report already stated that the current programs, the Housing Department, current programs they have are underutilized. So, before we create any new program, let's streamline those programs and better promote the current programs that we have. RSO owners do not want to take away any additional city resources that could go towards public safety, infrastructure improvements, and economic development. The last point is none of these programs or resources are guaranteed to last forever, as they could be eliminated or reduced by future city councils. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I want to move this forward to the ACED Committee. And it would be, I would convey it as a communication from the chair of the Jobs Committee. I think that the, it's interesting to me that everybody was clamoring to get this study done, and the, the key finding under the study is that huge chunk of Los Angeles is under, is, is rent burdened. And yet, the recommendations seem to provide more benefits to the apartment owners. Apartment owners have testified over and over again that they've had to reduce rents, which, which in and of itself declares that, that the current rent is not at market rate, that it is higher than market rate. So, why in the world would we want to allow them to increase their rents when others are testifying they have to lower their rents, which means that the current rents are not at their, their, their market rate? That's just not fair. And, and, you know, I know there are those who say, "Well, you can never get your proposal passed." But I'm not sure what proposal can get passed, because there's some, there's quite a bit of consternation in the council, and I'll say this publicly, that, that I'm not sure any proposal has eight votes. And, and so, you know, I think the, the discussion, once it goes from ACED to council, is going to be the most important. But I, for one, cannot support the, the annual rate adjustments without tying them to the CPI. The, so, my recommendations would be to amend the LAHD report currently in the Housing Community and Economic Development Committee to do the following: to reduce the floor for RSO annual rent adjustment from three to zero with no increase in the ceiling of 8%. Do not, number two, do not establish the utility adjustment surcharge to be added to the CPI for determination of the annual adjustment. And let me, let me explain very briefly on that. The, the Consumer Price Index already takes into account the charges for utilities, and I don't know where, well, actually, I do know where the idea came from, to extrapolate out some of the most inflationary sections of the CPI and then create this surcharge. But you could have just as easily extrapolated out the deflationary items within the CPI and, and made the reverse argument. The math doesn't work. The CPI is the CPI, and we should tie, we should tie the program to the CPI, as we did partially, and, and unusually, it's, it's different than, than all others ever created. Secondly, I don't, I, I don't have any specific recommendations regarding making changes to the primary renovation program and the capital improvement program, but it needs to, they need to do something. I mean, the program is, is, we should have a specific, separate report just on how to incentivize the use of the primary renovation program. There just wasn't, I think, sufficient focus on the report in that area, except to say that people don't use it. And, and that seems to be clear. And for us to just turn a blind eye to it means that people are, are sort of just implementing their primary renovation programs on their own, or we are not ensuring that the buildings are being done in a way that is consistent with the RSO. So, I, so there really needs to be something done there. I don't have any specific recommendations, other than to try and get support from these other financing programs. Relative to new recommendations, I would request that DWP expand the utility loan program to RSO residential properties for upgrades to building electrical components, including solar panels. The solar issue needs to be more fully explored. That, that program would provide tremendous benefits to particularly larger complexes, but, but once we get it going, even the smallest of projects can benefit from that program. And it's just, I don't know where it got bogged down, but we really need to move forward with the solar programs. Five, we want to request DWP to create a new energy efficiency appliance program to give energy, energy-saving appliances to RSO buildings. Although I heard, did, did I hear testimony that they already do that? Or they may already do that? It was, it was a little unclear, so I'll just put it in the record. To give energy-saving appliances to RSO buildings... To give energy-saving appliances to RSO buildings, condition to remaining in the RSO building and free of charge to use by tenants, including refrigerators, water heaters, and air conditioning systems. Six, instruct LAHD and CDD to develop a pilot program and identify potential revenue streams for a program that would provide essentially small business loans to apartment owners that can demonstrate that they are providing affordable housing. We'll work with both departments before this gets to HCD to see if we can hone in on the details of that. That would be my fervent hope. I believe that that is where the greatest opportunity for, for developing programs exists. With regard to CRA, we would ask that they set aside $1 to $2 million in PACE funds for RSO units. I want to thank them for their work and their presentation. Of course, when you get the money, as you identified from RA, it makes it a little easier to do your report to this committee. But, but I do thank you for using or building on the idea, and I believe it will benefit your, your program, hopefully develop a model program for the, for the nation that, that we can use. Number nine, instruct Building and Safety to implement an expedited permit processing unit for RSO buildings utilizing existing staff levels. However, I would add that we instruct them to work more closely with the Housing Department to ensure that those, those apartment owners who are answering no to the five questions are doing so accurately and not just to avoid the primary renovation process. And finally, request the city attorney with the assistance of the Office of Finance to draft an ordinance to create a hardship exemption for RSO residential rental businesses with the following specifications: When the CPI is zero, businesses receive a 30% discount. When it is on their business taxes. When it is 1%, they receive a 20% discount. When it is 2%, they receive a 10% discount. And now, interestingly, we have a three-year waiver on taxes, so for the small businesses, those with gross receipts of less than $100,000, they're not paying those taxes anyway. So it would only be for those larger than that. But in any case, it is some assistance. And I believe we tried to identify some semblance of support to the apartment owners that would get to every level of the process. Those would be my recommendations. You know, this is not, this is not enjoyable sausage-making. This is very difficult sausage-making, because it affects so many people in so many direct ways, that I would, you know, once again, say, you know, I just wish it were great economic times and everybody could be very pleased with having a high-paying job and, and affordable rent, not because it's cheap, but because they have the money to pay for No, I've indicated that we were going to ask Housing and CDD to work with us to, I would like a report, but I would like to work with you on the report that goes to HCD directly. Do we have a scheduled date for HCD? December 8? Okay, so this will be going forward to HCD for their December 8 meeting. As I mentioned, there's considerable consternation in the, in the, that I am knowledgeable of in the council, not necessarily a majority of votes in any direction. And I know it's the desire of the council to be done with this issue, to move on with other pressing matters. So the advocates, you got to do what you do, and it's really up to you. But I also would express that to say that, you know, the status quo, to me, is not a good result, and I would hope that all the advocates would agree. And, and the art of compromise may be in order. So I'll leave that to your own thinking. So with that, let me, let me, are you clear on the direction and...
Recommendations, yes.
Okay. Then with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.